Good evening, and welcome to zoning board of appeals meeting for January 22, 2018. Prior to tonight's meeting, if you have a cellphone, please place it on vibrate or turn it off. If you wish to speak in favor or in opposition on a petition, please come to the podium, state your name, and sign in. That being said, tonight's meeting associate voting member will be Philip Jemana. Moving forward, under continuance of business, ZB 2017-49 for variance, Stephen McLean at 34 Fisher Street. The applicant is seeking a variance approval for the extension of a driveway at 34 Fisher Street. The project seeks relief under section 5.3 for landscaped open space, section 6.1.10 for off-street parking, dimensional requirements, and for any other relief required of the Lowell zoning ordinance. The subject property is located in a traditional two-family zoning district. It's a petitioner here this evening.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, this matter was continued previously at the last hearing, based on a suggestion by myself from the law department as to whether she could proceed. She's aware of the date, so I don't know if we want to put this to the back end of the agenda and see if she shows up.
Thank you, Mr. Callen. Do we have any correspondence for continuance or delay?
No, I mean, I forwarded the opinion from the law department, and I have tried to reach out to her, and I haven't been able to get ahold of her. So the last I've heard for her was the last meeting.
We can move this to the end of the agenda for this evening, and the petitioner's shows will take an order, reopen for public hearing. Moving on to new business, ZB 2018-1, site plan review and a special permit, Reno Properties LLC, 39 Myrtle Street. The applicant is seeking a request for relief from the zoning board of appeals to add nine more residential dwellings into the form of an old school building at 39 Myrtle Street. The existing parcel is 47,600 square feet and has a three-story building of approximately 32,000 square feet. The parcel is located in a traditional two-family zoning district and requires variance under section 5.1. Table of dimensional regulations for lot area per dwelling...
I think I have the wrong one.
You do?
Yeah, that's 122.
My apologies. Apologize, I was reading off the wrong agenda. That being said, moving forward under new business, ZB 2018-4, special permit, Hungzai Lu, 1527 Middlesex Street. The application, applicant is seeking special permit approval to operate a massage parlor at 1527 Middlesex Street, Unit 3. The subject property is located in the regional retail zoning district and requires a zoning special permit under Article 12, Table of Uses, 12.4K, and any other relief required of the Lowell zoning ordinance. It's a petitioner here this evening. May I step to the podium, sign in, state your name, and mind giving us a little bit about your request tonight?
Write your name here.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well. Want to give us a little background, a little history of your request for the application tonight?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I want to open this massage store.
I'm sorry, her English is a little...
Well, that's fine.
Sorry.
If you could sign in and walk us through the petition, state your name for the record.
Chris McGilfry. She's looking to open a massage parlor located at 1527 Middlesex. We've got approval from the current landlord. She's a licensed massage therapist in the state of Massachusetts and has been for a couple of years. She's been practicing massage for five or six years. She's decided that, you know, after some time of working for other people, she's decided to branch out and go on her own, seeking to have a couple different private rooms in there for couples as well as singles, making sure the clientele is 21 ages, 21 years of age or older, with stripped operating hours of nine to nine. Other locations in that, other stores in that location include, you know, a tattoo store, nail salon. So I don't think that any, you know, having a massage in that area will be any kind of influence on the other businesses. It won't hinder their business at all. Do you want to say anything?
Okay. Thank you very much. If you wish to discuss something, we'll bring you back up. Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this petition in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board. Dennis, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that I went out to the facility and noticed that it's a very well-maintained plaza, and it looks like it would be a good fit for that neighborhood and understanding that there's no concerns from the neighbors. Just have a few questions, but before I do that, I just want to mention that if the rest of the board members want to support it, the, in the past, we've approved these with a condition of a six-month review, and I could see us making that as a condition here just to be sure that we're not providing a negative effect on the neighborhood. Okay, that being said, I just have, there were a couple of comments, the hours of business, I don't know if that's been established. Is that 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I think the plaza is generally open about that period of time. Do you know if the...
Most stores are open during that general time, and then the martial arts dojo has different hours during the weekends depending on what's going on in that area.
Okay, and so that's 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Is that seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I really don't have any concerns, although, how many employees are you expecting to have?
To start off, she will have no employees. She will be operating it by herself.
Okay, but there's plans to expand, or?
That would all depend on the amount of business. If there was a need, if there was a need for it, then she would apply for permission to have additional employees, but at the current time, and because she's just starting, she doesn't want to say that she's going to have employees, because she may not.
Very good. It's a long hours, a lot of hours there.
Yeah.
All right, well, I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I have no real questions or concerns on this. It appears that it's a business that could probably fit in with the rest of the, west of the plot people in the plaza, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Van?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Philip?
Good evening. Yeah, I went by the place. It's a nice place, actually. Probably my only concern could be you have a lot of stores in that general area. Do you know when is your busiest day of the week? Do you know that? Because probably might be, there will not be enough parking spot for everybody there.
It's quite a large parking lot, and most, probably 20 or 30 spaces available in that location. I don't expect, the landlord, speaking to the landlord, we don't think there's going to be any influence on anybody else's ability to have parking available for their business.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. As you can see, the board has had a few questions. I just want to make aware, did you receive the comments, comments from the city of Lowell, and you've gone through that?
Yes, sir.
There aren't any major concerns, making sure that you did receive your copy. That being said, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB, thanks, sorry, ZB 2018-4, special permit for operation of a massage parlor under Table of Uses for Article 12, with the following condition, six-month administrative review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved with condition.
Member Pack?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved with condition.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with condition.
Member Jamina?
Approved with condition.
You've been approved.
Thank you.
Best of luck with your business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Moving on to the new business, the ZB 2008-7 for variance, Textile Group LLC at 491 Dutton Street. The applicant is seeking special permit under section 9.2.3 for the renovation and redevelopment of a portion of the third and fourth floors of the former American Textile History Museum, Inc., into 13 units of artist live workspaces. The proposed units will contain between 940 and 1600 square feet of living workspace. The subject property is located in the urban mixed-use zoning district. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm John DeAngelis, the developer and owner of the American Textile History Museum. What we're here to petition tonight is the fact that we want to take the third and fourth floor of the West Wing and convert it from commercial to residential use, loft units. Now, what we've had here is, excuse me, I'm just getting over a call. The original plan, when I bought the half the museum, which was 12 years ago already, I can't believe that, the original plan was to take and create 45 residential units, which we did. We created 26,000 square feet of office space, which is now known as the headquarters to the Lowell Sun. And then we took the restaurant and we increased the size of the kitchen so it would be more than just a breakfast place. That exists today. My original plan, when I bought the first phases, was to anticipate that I would get to this point sooner or later. So what we've done is we've brought all the utilities, the hallways, the stairwells, the elevators, it's all done. It was all planned. So now, this is just a simple, take a few doors off, create the hallways, and build out the units. Now, this portion of the building was the archive room, so they're just open floor space, two floors of just open floor space. So by adding the 14 units, it's actually helping the association, because at this point, the primary and the secondary are at 70% residence, 30% commercial, which does not give us the Fannie Mae approval that's needed for any bank to finance this project. So in doing that, I met with all the unit owners, and we've come up with a developer agreement, so that we're all in thinking the same way. And we needed 100% approval to get that, and we got 100% approval from all the unit owners, okay? Now, with that, the developer agreement will add certain benefits, like outdoor space now and roof deck, just something that'll be more suitable for living pleasures on the weekend. Now, the other factor is, when we bought the building, the building is a nonprofit, so the first phase of 45 units now became on the tax roll. They got on the tax roll, along with the 26,000 square feet. The 60,000 square feet now, which is the final phase of this project, will have 14 residential units. It'll have 20,000 square feet of commercial space for startup company. It'll have 7,400 square feet of office space, which is suitable for attorneys, and luckily, we have the new courthouse right across the street being built. We've, as part of the development also, we've given the restaurant the permission to seek out a liquor license and upscale the restaurant for more of a lounge and a dinner place, more so than a breakfast place. Now, with the purchase of the final phase, by adding the 14 units, the percentages will grow to 81% residential and 19% commercial. When I bought the balance of the museum, the museum came with 40 parking places. Right now, as it stands, the residents have 60 some odd parking spaces, the Lowell Sun has 25, and I have 40. So now, I'm going to add 14 units, and that'll give us plenty of parking. We've all decided that we'll use a first-come, first-served basis, so that during the day, the commercial use will be using the parking lot, and at night, all the residents. This is the way it's been for 12 years. So the residents go to work during the day, they come home. It's worked. We haven't had a problem. The, as far as the balance of what's going to happen with the museum, the museum is such a beautiful piece of property that I did not want to go in and strip the museum down. I want to keep the displays. I want to keep the offices. We're going to convert it more to a commercial office atmosphere and use the displays for all kinds of relics that have been saved from Lowell, the arts, and whatever, to be able to open it to the public. That'll certainly help the restaurant. And the displays themselves, there must be millions of dollars spent in this building. So I didn't come in with an attitude of ripping it all out, putting apartments in and getting more lofts. I could have got probably another 30 lofts, but that's not the goal here. So with that said, the parking, the trash won't, will not change, as far as trash, that was one of the questions here. Right now, there are, I think, four storage containers next to the trash bins, which the museum has. Those will be removed, so there's plenty of space if we had to add another container. The final, the final result here, oh, other than that too, we are working on a plan, of which I will produce and bring to the fire department, through our engineer, that will, that will actually design the sprinkler system. Right now, we have a great sprinkler system, but once we change it to residential, we have to do what they call a fit-up. So that will be produced, brought to the fire department, and at that point, we'll seek out our permits. We're here tonight just to be able to change that use from commercial to residential. So when it's all said and done, we're going to have the headquarters to the Lowell Sun, we'll have 59 loft units, we'll have 7,000 square feet of office space, we'll have 20,000 square feet of commercial space to a startup company, and in the museum itself, we'll have seven or eight individual commercial units. And then, all the common areas and hallways remain, and that's something that will enhance, hopefully, the amount of people that come into the restaurant and so forth. So I can answer any questions. That's it in a nutshell. I mean, there's no surprise to it. The tax base will grow. You'll get 14 more residential units, and you'll get all that commercial property, which is not taxed today. So the end result is, that will be one little city, and I'm proud to say that it's, I feel it's one of the finer places to live in the city. I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate, appreciate your insight and your commitment to the, to the, that building and to the city. That being said, I just wanted, are you aware of the comments? Did you receive a copy of the comments from the city?
I did.
And you went through those?
I did.
May, may need to speak to those from some of the board members. That being said, we're moving on to the open public forum. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Please approach the podium, state your name, and sign in for the record, please.
My name is Christopher Sullivan. I'm a member of the trustee, Board of Trustees for the condo association of the current residents.
Welcome.
And just taking a minute to speak to the fact that as an owner of a unit that John built, and as a, as a member of the Board of Trustees, I think this will be a tremendous positive change for the, for the building. We love the museum. We wish it could have stayed forever, but it was obviously not to be. And it was something we were very concerned with as to what would come in there, not just for ourselves, but for, for the city, because the building is, I think, a tremendous building, and the museum has had a great reputation over the years. John not only knows the building, knows the condo associations. Among the things that he's agreed to do is to build the units in a like fashion for the units there, so we think it will have significant value for the city in terms of the tax base associated with these units. And we also believe that the construction that we've seen John do is well-suited to the space and very supportive. John mentioned that we had a vote of the ownership, and 100% of the voter, of the ownership has voted to support this for the many reasons John has laid out. So we're, we're very supportive and look forward to hopefully working with John over the next few years to get it done.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Welcome, sir. Just state your name and sign in for the record.
My name is Colin Sweeney, and I am a resident of the building and also a trustee, like Chris. And actually, I'm a trustee of both the primary and the secondary condominium association. I just, I don't want to repeat everything that Chris says, but I agree with everything that he said. I have actually been in the building since the start. I was the third, my wife and I were the third people to move in, and we've been very happy with the, with the project, and the, and the place is beautiful. And as Chris said, we were concerned that the standard would not be kept up, but we're very confident that John will do that. I'll also repeat the comment that we got 100% support when we went to the residents. Also, the owners of the commercial units provided support as well. So everybody is behind what John wants to do, and I wanted to come here and give my support to that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Favor, sir? State your name and sign in, please.
Good evening. Tim Lyons. I live at 491 Dutton Street as well. I'm the trustee of the residential board. And I just, again, I'm not going to say a thing, but I think would be, the, the members, the owners of the current residential units would be very upset if we weren't able to proceed. It's been a lot of work by the board, as well as a lot of the residents, making sure that this thing all worked for everybody's concerns. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board for comments. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm thrilled that this is coming before us with such a good idea and such a great way of proceeding, so that the building is preserved and that things are done in a way that's very compatible, rather than just making sure that as much profit as possible, which is very, very nice to see. I want to just understand a couple of details, though. Is it 13 units or 14 units? Because I think the documents that we have in front of us say 13.
It was originally 14, but one person has elected to buy two units, so we've decided to join them together. And so we're down to 13 units at that point.
It is 13 then, great, okay. And then...
There's one other thing. I've always kept the builder's rights to be able to split it, so there could be 14. So maybe I'd like to keep it at 14, but...
Well, Patrick, right now, the documents that we have say 13 units.
Yeah, everything we have says 13, the narrative in the petition and how it was written in the agenda, so...
We'll keep, we'll keep it at 13.
I think, I think at this point, okay. And then, I just want to understand the parking. So I went by, looks like there's plenty of spaces, but I'm hearing the number of units is going to potentially grow to 59 units or 58?
58 now.
58, okay. And is that two parking spaces per unit, Patrick, that we're looking at?
Sorry, what?
Two parking spaces per unit over there, right? So that's 116 parking spaces, and I quickly did the math of what you were talking about. I think you were up to 125 spaces total?
125. And that we can put some additional parking now that the containers are going to be removed, we'll probably pick up another four.
Okay, but, but...
Right now, there's 125, 126.
I guess where I'm starting to think, I think the office might work out, but the restaurant with the liquor license sounds to me like it might have a parking concern. So right now, we're not dealing with that exactly. Is that something that would come before us, or how does that, if the restaurant, if we approve this tonight, and there's a restaurant that goes in that suddenly needs 25 parking spaces, are we approving a problem? Or what are we getting at there?
Well, we don't, parking for restaurants doesn't go by the liquor license, whether there is one or not. It's on the square footage. So if the park, if the square footage of the restaurant isn't changing, then for zoning, it wouldn't change.
Okay. I, I'd just like to know how many spaces are dedicated to the restaurant then, I guess, of the...
Well, then again... But then again, it's first come, first served. We do have an overflow. The Lowell Sun has leased, I believe, twenty or twenty-five places next door in the old giant building parking lot. So there is an overflow, and we want to, I made it clear, if the Lowell Sun gives them up, we want those spaces. We want to continue the lease, the spaces next door. But right now, the restaurant existed, it's existing now. Don't forget, the museum brought busloads of people in.
I, I know. I'm, I'm just thinking, though...
No, I'm with you.
With all the residents at night?
Yep.
With sixty potential parking spaces, or a hundred, a hundred and sixteen parking spaces potentially?
Right.
And then you have a thriving restaurant, and everyone wants to go there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, it's, it's very small. You've been in there.
But we have an overflow potential over there.
We have an overflow.
So we potentially are going...
Plus the nine-hundred car parking garage across the street.
Thirteen?
Right.
Okay.
We're lucky to have a parking space.
In fact, that, that's the issue of the restaurant.
Okay. Yeah, they talked about if the, the parking garage is a major asset to us across the street. So if it did turn out to be financially successful like that, then we would have to look at more parking next door, because the residents have the first shot. The, the restaurant has no parking places assigned to it at this point. The residents will, and the Lowell Sun itself. But the restaurant has, we have nothing in writing with them for parking spaces. So if it becomes successful, it'll have to park next door, we'll have to do whatever. But we're looking at about another year before that restaurant is open. And it can only hold, I think, fifty people at this time? Fifty people? And there's no room to expand either, at that point.
So you figure maybe thirty spaces dedicated to the restaurant would make sense if it's full booked a hundred percent, maybe, you know, twenty-five cars for the fifty people, and maybe five employees would bring you up to about thirty, potentially, in that realm?
Potentially.
And, and you have, so, so just doing the math quickly, one sixteen, two, one twenty-nine? So there's an overflow of thirteen there, and then there's twenty-five at the Giant Store, potentially, so that's thirty, thirty-eight spaces. So that's enough. I'm feeling good. Feeling good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question, Mr. DeAngelo. I presume, the, the question's probably already been answered, but whatever. These are all going to be condominium units, no rentals or anything.
Correct.
Just also, okay. That was the only question I really had. I mean, this is obviously going to, I bet, as, as all your projects are, I think it's going to be an outstanding project, and looking forward to seeing it. All the people and the, the trustees and everybody else are an improvement of it. They even said that they'd be upset if it, if, if it didn't happen. So I fully support this project, and I wish you the best of luck as always. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, Ben.
Three, Mr. Chairman. Like my colleagues, I think this is a great project and a good reuse and repurpose of the former museum and, and repurpose of this whole building as a whole. Mr. DeAngelo, I think you do amazing work in the city. I just want to ask you about the comments from DPD, specifically Section Three, the comment about trash and recycling. With the additional thirteen units, would there be like extra pickup for receptacles or an extra bin or dumpster? Or how, how do you plan on...
I, I think possibly, yeah. Where they live there, they know.
So today, today with the forty-five units we have, we do two pickups a week, and it's sufficient. If we had to increase the capacity by a third for another condominiums, minimums plus those, we could go as, as many as five days a week. We don't anticipate that. We could pick it up daily, or we could just add one or two pickups as necessary without any footprint required.
Okay. No, that's, that's adequate. With my colleagues, okay with them. I would like this as condition, if it's overflow trash, or if there's an issue with trash, we'll have an extra day of pickup. And also, Mr. DeAngelo, from the building department, can you just talk about that, their concerns?
The what now?
The building department? The comments from the building department?
Okay, that, well, I think I addressed them, but the, the, one of them was just the fact that before a permit is pulled, that we would have my engineer design the new sprinkler system for the fourteen units, and it'd be given to the fire department. In turn, they'll have a letter sent to the building commissioner, and at that point, they'll issue the permits. This is same, same standard practice we've done in every building.
Okay. Overall, I think, like I said, this is a great project and, and good repurpose of the, of the whole building as a whole. Wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you, Ben. Philip?
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
I went by the place. Actually, it's a nice place, and it's good business for, for the city. So I wish you the best of luck, anyway.
Thank you.
I don't have any concerns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank members of the public and the, and the Board of Trustees and the, and the residents of that community coming down in support of this petition. As my colleagues have stated, I mean, that, that is, it is the American, it is the textile museum. It, it, it holds dear to the city, and it holds dear to you. You could tell by the way you, you talked about your project and the way you, you work in the city and how you preserve the history of the city. So we thank you for that.
Thanks.
The board is, is in support of that. With that being said, I'd like a motion, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for ZB two thousand eighteen dash seven. The applicant is Textile Group LLC, a property located at four ninety-one Dutton Street, for a special permit under Section nine point two-three for renovation redevelopment of the third and fourth floors of the former American Textile History Museum. It's a thirteen units.
You want...
Was there a condition?
Yeah, just one.
What was it? What was it?
Just looking at that one condition, that you would, you would increase to a five-day trash pickup if needed.
Three to four days.
Three to four.
That's fine. With the condition, okay. The condition of increase to a four-day trash pickup if necessary, if needed.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Parren?
Approve what condition?
Member Beck?
Approve an addition.
Member Callahan?
Approve a condition?
Member McCarthy?
Approve a condition.
Member Jimena?
Approve a condition.
Sir, you've been approved unanimously. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Continued success in that building. Thank you. Moving on to ZB two thousand eighteen dash six for a variance by NE Heritage Properties, eight fifty and eight fifty-two and a half Lawrence Street. The applicant is seeking variance approval for the redevelopment of a four-story mill structure into seventy-one residential dwelling units and improvements to the associated parking area. The subject property is located in the traditional mixed-use zoning district and requires variance approval under Section eight point one point three point one. Lot area per, per dwelling unit. Section eight point one point three point two, parking requirements. Section eight point one point three point four, minimum floor area requirements. Section eight point one point three point six, usable open space and any other relief required. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we, we have permission to set up a display?
Certainly.
Thank you. While Chris works on that, I'll introduce myself, if that's acceptable.
Move on. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, first of all, thank you for having us. On behalf of Heritage Properties, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to present to you the proposed development for eight fifty and eight fifty-two point five Lawrence Street, which we refer to as Waterhead. My name is Jeff Bush. I work for Heritage Properties. With me tonight is Chris Peterson, also from our team, and Brian Gaudreau from Hancock Associates, the engineers for this plan. I should also mention that we are represented legally by Jim and Catherine Flood. Catherine was anticipating being here tonight but is unable to be here because of a family situation. She regrets not being here, but has asked me to present in her absence. So it is my intent to do so tonight, if that's acceptable to you. I'll answer any questions you may have, and if I or Brian or Chris cannot answer, we can always defer to Catherine. I should also mention that we've been very gratefully working with the city of Lowell, with Diane Trad and the folks at the DPD to work out some of the issues relative to the site and the proposed development. And as I mentioned, we're very grateful for the cooperation that they've shown. We've also been in contact with Steve Stoll from the Historic Board. This project is not within the purview of the Historic Commission because of its location, but because of the significant historic history of the building, we wanted to make sure that he was included. So he has been included in preliminary discussions. I'd like to give you a brief overview of the project tonight and then address individually the variances that we're requesting, if that's agreeable to you.
Certainly.
So this project, as shown, is for the redevelopment of a currently underutilized mill into seventy-one apartment units. Sixty-eight of those units would be one-bedroom units, and the three remaining would be studios. They would all be market rate rentals. The site is comprised of two lots, eight fifty and eight fifty-two point five Lawrence Street, totaling its, a total of eighty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-two square feet. Just to orient you to the project a little bit, this visual with some highlighting shows the two parcels. I believe the, the parcels are highlighted in orange. On the left or the northern section geographically is eight fifty-two point five Lawrence Street. To the south and to the right on this representation is eight fifty Lawrence Street. Within eight fifty, you can see in the yellow highlighter, again, I apologize, it's light, you can see the existing footprint of the building, which is to remain largely unchanged with the exception of a loading dock on the west side that is of not, of historic nature. To orient you more generally, this project is located near Moore Street and the Lawrence Street Bridge, on what is referred to often as Centennial Island. For this project, we require a few things. We require a site plan review and special permit from the planning board under Sections eleven point four and eight point one of the zoning code. We received that last Monday with some conditions which I believe are in your packets. We are here tonight for four variances from the ZBA. Just briefly, those are for lot area per dwelling unit, parking per dwelling unit, usable open space, as well as floor area per unit. And I'll address the, the hardships and the, and the nature of those in a moment, if that's acceptable. We also require approval from the Conservation Commission. We are on the board, on the docket, to meet with them Wednesday. And additionally, we've had an informal meeting with the abutters a number of weeks ago to discuss this project, to bring that to them in a more informal, non-intimidating setting, and to elicit some of their feedback and hear any concerns they may have. A number of abutters showed up for that meeting, and they're, they were overwhelmingly supportive, which we were grateful for. Additionally, this project is eligible, eligible for historic tax credits and H-DIP credit, which is the Housing Development and Incentive Program under the state of Massachusetts. It is our intent to pursue both of those. That's relevant because as far as the historic tax credit is concerned, we have to act diligently to preserve the historic nature of the building. So as I mentioned before, this is not within a historic district in Lowell, but our intent is to preserve as much of the historic nature of the building as possible. Chris, if you'd flip to the next slide. As I mentioned, there are two lots. This visualization shows you sort of what the finalized product ought to look like at this state in the, in the development. We have a number of abutters on this property. Parcel owned by Kenneth Skagel to the right, parcels owned by the city to the east, as well as the north, and then Centennial Hydroelectric, which runs, which runs a hydroelectric power plant at the tail of the island, also abuts us to the west and to the north of the city parcel. As you can see in this representation, we're bounded by both the Concord River to the east and the Wamisit Canal to the right. So the, the parcel is an island with an existing bridge that comes from Lawrence Street onto the island. Another key feature of this project is the Concord River Greenway expansion, as is depicted on this map here. So the current Greenway terminates just to the right of where Chris is pointing, and the city and the Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust have proposed to come across the river and then run that trail north along the eastern side of the island, where it will connect with the existing trail and eventually to downtown Lowell. We think that would be a great amenity for the project, and we've met with the city in discussing some mutual easements that are necessary to get both this project and the Greenway accomplished. As far as the building goes, Chris, if you would flip to the next page, the current building is in good structural condition but is underutilized from a use standpoint. As you can see in this picture here, the facade of the building has not been maintained in its historic condition, but luckily, the roof has been maintained, which has saved a lot of the integrity of the both structural and architectural features within the building. And as I mentioned, we intend to preserve those as much as possible. Again, we're proposing seventy-one units, sixty-eight of which are one-bedroom units, three of which are studios, and those are all market rental units. Chris, if you go to the next slide. As shown here in the top right, we anticipate that the units will have high ceilings, exposed beams and columns, and exposed brick and other architectural features characteristic of the history of this mill. Additionally, we intend to replace the windows that are currently there, or the windows that have been, some of the windows that have been bricked in, with historic replications of those windows. So it'll sort of bring that facade back to life in the way in which it was originally built. Additionally, we anticipate a number of community building amenities for our residents. Those are to include an indoor bike storage area. With the Greenway, we anticipate that that will be a nice amenity for our residents to be able to have a secure, dry place to store their bikes. Additionally, we anticipate a dog wash in the basement. Pets have become a large component of multifamily dwelling, and people feel very strongly about their pets, some more strongly than they feel about their children. So we hope to provide them some nice amenities to cater to those pets. Additionally, we anticipate a co-working space and community room, as I mentioned before, to foster a sense of community among our residents. So this is really a place to call home, not just a place to rest your head at night. Additionally, we'll have a property management office on site. We anticipate staffing that heavily during the initial lease-up, and then consistently, once the property is stabilized, to ensure that the property is taken care of in a way that is, is owed. And as I mentioned as well, the Concord River Greenway, we can't take credit for that, but it will be a nice amenity for our residents. If it's all right with you, I'd like to move now to our variances that we've requested specifically. So the first one is minimum lot area per dwelling unit. The zoning ordinance requires twenty-five hundred square feet per dwelling unit. We currently do not meet that with our proposal. Again, back to this slide, sort of shows you again what we're sort of looking at is an overview of the property. The hardships we face here really have to do with the existing nature of the property. So the building is what it is, and our intent is to develop within the framework of that building, so we really can't change the footprint. And the land is what it is, and geographically, it's bounded on two sides by a river that significantly constrains our ability to develop. So we feel that Section eight point one cites the intent in the zoning ordinances of the reuse of this building and acknowledges that this is often a hardship faced by the reuse of historic buildings. So we feel that we, although we don't comply, we are complying with the intent of the, of the underlying zoning. The next variance we've requested is parking spaces per dwelling unit. The very, the zoning ordinance here again requires two spaces per dwelling unit, which with seventy-one units would require one hundred and forty-two parking spaces. We are proposing one hundred and six units, which gives us a ratio of one point five parking spaces per dwelling unit. You'll also note in our plan, we've added sixteen land bank spaces. I'll talk about those in a minute. Those are not formally recognized by the Department of Planning and Development, but something that we feel would be a benefit. So again, the existing geography and parcel layout are as they are, and so they, they present inherent challenges because of the geography, both because of the rivers, but also the elevations of this parcel. Furthermore, we feel that the hardship required to be demonstrated here is not necessarily reflective of parking needs and demands in multifamily development as we've seen them. Heritage Properties has been in the city of Lowell for forty years. We've owned and managed over five hundred apartment units here in the city. The first units that we bought forty years ago, we still own and manage today. So we take great pride in our work and pay attention to things like parking, because in an urban setting, that often can be challenging. In our experience, parking demand is more closely associated with the number of bedrooms as opposed to the number of dwelling units. And I think you can understand sort of informally that somebody with a two-bedroom apartment unit is more likely to have more occupants, therefore more cars, than somebody living in a one-bedroom dwelling unit. And so in our experience, often, one-bedrooms have one car, two-bedrooms almost always have two cars, and some one-bedrooms will carry two cars in the dwelling unit. So we, in our other developments and our other management, feel very comfortable with one point two-five parking spaces per dwelling unit. We recognize that the city is asking for more, and so we'd like to be amenable to that. that, and so we have proposed the one-point-five parking spaces per dwelling unit here. As I mentioned, Chris, if you would just point to the east of some of our southernmost parking spaces, we've provided a land bank parking. We call them double-barreled, some people call them stacked. And the idea here is that if we're wrong, if our data doesn't match the reality, we'd have an extra sixteen parking spaces that have already been graded and sloped for parking. Drainage has accounted for them being there. And so if we happen onto the situation where we cannot meet parking demand, it would be relatively easy for us to remove the topsoil, pave, and then have those double-barreled parking spaces designated for units with more than one car. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that after. And finally, as far as the parking goes, as I mentioned, we're not just a developer, we're a management company, and so when we think about proposing developments like this, we really look at, is there going to be a problem? Because if there is, we'll be the ones to deal with it first and foremost. And so while the city certainly doesn't want to have a parking issue on their hands, neither do we, and that's why, as I mentioned, we feel comfortable with this one-point-five parking spaces per dwelling unit. The next variance we're requesting is minimum floor area per dwelling unit. Seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet is required by zoning ordinance. We have six of the seventy-one units that do not meet that, and I can give you the square footage of the ones that don't. A number of them are at six-hundred square feet, and then we have one, the smallest, is four-hundred-and-seventy-five. Again, given the existing building, we're trying to work within the framework of the building, and so every consideration was made to look at this in an efficient way and in a way that is favorable towards the residents. And even, I'm sorry, we made efforts, and I can actually show you tonight, one of our early plans, one of our early iterations, that had only two units requiring a variance for this minimum floor area. So I recognize that this might be hard to see, but if you have your blowups of the existing plan, I can sort of point you in the general direction. So, in the northwest corner of this building, we have a stairwell that is existing. This iteration contemplates changing that stairwell and the tread direction so that we would have a landing that entered into the sort of middle corridor, which would allow us to buy back the space in the units that are the eleven stacks, so G-eleven, one-eleven, two-eleven, three-eleven. And that would give us enough space in those units to get above the seven-hundred-and-fifty square foot requirement. However, that requires removing the existing stair, and from a historic standpoint, that's unacceptable. And so, as much as we would like to do this and get the seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet back, the feedback has been that the stair ought to remain. And so, as I mentioned, that stack of eleven units, three of them, four of them, I apologize, are thus being requested for a variance. Additionally, as I mentioned, we own and operate over five-hundred apartments in greater Lowell. We own and manage over two-thousand units from as far south as Providence to as far north as Portland, Maine, and increasingly on both a local, regional, and national level, the demand has been for smaller units, and also from one-bedrooms as opposed to two-bedrooms, is what we've seen. And so when we designed this building, we looked at what would be most amenable and agreeable to the potential residents that we see living here. And given that that demand is for, as I mentioned, smaller one-bedroom units and one-bedrooms over two-bedrooms, coupled with the existing layout of the building, we feel that the seventy-one units with those six units requesting a variance is the optimal makeup. The final variance we're here for tonight is usable open space per dwelling unit. Zoning variance requires two-hundred-and-fifty square feet per dwelling unit. We're providing two-hundred-and-thirty-six. Again, because of the limited land area of the two parcels, as well as the existing conditions, we feel that we've done as good of a job as we can providing usable open space. It should also be noted that, as I mentioned, the Greenway, the Greenway extension would provide a suitable amenity to sort of supplement the existing usable space on this lot. And there's also the Father Kerwin Park, which is just across Lawrence Street from this project, that we feel is accessible to the residents for using open space. One final note, if we were only requesting variances for usable open space and minimum lot area per the dwelling unit, under section eight-point-one-point-three-point-ten, we could receive a special permit from the planning board to waive those two variances in lieu of appearing before the ZBA. And while that's not the case tonight, and we certainly recognize that, we feel that the zoning was written with the intention of reflecting the fact that rehabilitation of historic structures in Lowell presents inherent challenges, especially as it relates to usable open space and minimum lot area per dwelling unit. And as I mentioned, we've tried our very best to facilitate the maximization of those metrics, but we fall short in this proposal. So that sort of is my overview. If you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer them more whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much. It was a nice overview and very well presented. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
That being said, we're going to move over to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Favor? Approach and state your name and sign in, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the ZBA, my name is Charles Arnold. I live at fifty-eight Prescott Street in Lowell, and I'm here tonight in favor of the variance on behalf of the Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust. I'm a member of the Lowell Bicycle Coalition, which is a four-hundred-plus-member community of cyclists and advocates for better and safer access for cycling in the city of Lowell. Our membership has identified the expansion of a network of trails in the city as a top priority, so I'm here tonight on that behalf. Jane Calvin of the Parks and Conservation Trust cannot be here tonight. She has asked me to read a brief statement for her, if that would be acceptable to you.
Certainly.
Sure. Thank you. The Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust is pleased to support the Heritage Properties' application to the ZBA for their mill redevelopment project at eight fifty Lawrence Street. Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust has been offering programs on and around Centennial Island since the late nineteen-eighties. We currently offer whitewater rafting on the rapids that abut the historic Waterhead Mill, and we monitor fish passage on the southern tip of the island at the Centennial Fish Ladder. Opposite the mill is one of the three completed sections of the city's Concord River Greenway. The next phase of the Concord River Greenway includes a bridge from the end of that section across the river, which will land on Centennial Island. Because of the grade change for this ADA-accessible bridge, there is a turning radius at the landing on Centennial that will impinge on the parking area of the Waterhead Mill project. From the project's inception, Heritage Properties has seen the Greenway as an amenity for this project, even though it has required some additional work around and flexibility. We are grateful that Heritage Properties is willing to invest in this hidden jewel of an area in Lowell. We are confident that as their project moves forward, that we will be able to find a way cooperatively to find accommodations for monitoring the whitewater rafting and for fish monitoring each spring. We urge the Zoning Board of Appeals to support this application, and thank you for your consideration of this letter. Sincerely, Jane Calvin, Executive Director, Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir. State your name and sign.
Brian Calhoun, Unit One, nine-hundred Lawrence Street. I can't speak for all the members of the association that live there, but we were certainly the ones that went and met with these guys a couple of weeks ago. All seemed to be in favor of it. Anything that would improve the look of the building would be greatly appreciated, because right now, as you know, I don't know if you guys have ever driven by there, but it's all boarded up. It's really nasty-looking, so anything that they could do to improve that would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Prior to closing of the public hearing, I would like to place into the record a letter from Olson Electric, signed by Mr. Kevin Olson, the principal. In Lowell, it's a letter in favor. As Kevin Olson is the owner-operator of Centennial Island Hydroelectric Company, owns multiple properties in the Sentinel Island adjacent to both eight fifty and eight, eight fifty-two-point-five Lawrence Street. He is submitting a letter in support and in favor of this petition. That being said, portion of the public hearing in favor is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What a great presentation. I just want to speak to the wealth of materials that we received that really detail why this is going to be a signature project for this area, for sure. It's a well-needed project, and the gentleman that spoke to the aesthetics of the mill today, it's almost unrecognizable in what we see in the package. It's really quite good. I just have a couple of questions, like I typically do, but so, the impact of the Greenway bike path, does that weigh in to the decrease in green space per dwelling unit and also the decrease in parking at all?
In other words, is there a negative impact on the size of the lot?
Right, to accommodate this.
Sure. Chris, if you would go to that, it's towards the end there. I have a slide that sort of shows the parcel locations as well as where the proposed easement is. I think that'll be the best way to address this question, if that's okay. That should be in there. It's the one with the Greenway's in a green highlighter, I believe? I'm convinced there's a better way to present these slides, I just haven't figured it out yet. All right, so, again, I've shown the parcel locations here in the orange, and the proposed Greenway is in green. So you can see that on the eastern side, there is one intersection of both our parcel and the Greenway. And again, we worked with the city. Initially, the Greenway proposal was actually for quite a bit more space on the city parcel, and as they mentioned, there is a turning radius required to keep a bike going twelve miles per hour on that path, which is why we can't take sort of a right angle on the city parcel, which is to the east of eight fifty-two-point-five Lawrence Street. So, the city was pretty adamant about the location of that turning radius, and so we worked rather diligently with Hancock Associates and the city's engineers to find the situation that was most amenable. Additionally, I should mention that currently, there's an easement for the benefit of Centennial Island at the north end of the island. The travels, as they come across the bridge, Chris can show you, they come across the bridge, they sort of hug the corner of the building until they're on city land, and then they take a hard left and travel up north. The initial proposal by the city had the travelway for his vehicle access in parallel and right next to, adjacent to, the proposed Greenway. That presented a significant challenge for us in terms of laying out parking and also not impacting usable open space. So what we've agreed to conceptually with both the abutters and the city is to relocate his easement to travel through the middle of our parking driveway essentially to the end, so that we can sort of achieve both goals with minimal impact to our site.
So, I guess, it's wonderful what you've done. It seems like a win-win for everybody, but we are looking at a reduction in parking partly to accommodate the bike path.
Sure.
Which I'm all for, because I love to bike, and I'm looking forward to this completion of this bike path someday. But, so you're losing some parking spaces. So, you said that you are going to land bank sixteen spaces.
That is correct.
And they're shown in the plan. Do they conflict with the detention basin?
If it's all right with you, I'll have Brian Godereau, the engineer, speak to that. That's acceptable.
Because it's like really close.
Yeah, good evening. Brian Godereau with Hancock Associates. So what we've done in our drainage analysis is take into account the full build-out potential of the site, meaning that if those sixteen spaces were actually paved, they would not be in direct conflict with the infiltration basin. So what you see indicated by the detention basin, as you indicated, is actually just a very shallow, it's about eighteen inches deep, and it is for infiltration of roof runoff. So right now, the existing building has interior roof leaders that go directly into the Concord River. We're proposing to reconstruct those, direct those into a very shallow grassed area, and then allow it to get into the ground that way. So, in short, if those sixteen spaces were built fully out, it would have no impact on the infiltration basin. It's been designed, sized, and sited such that it will work as constructed.
And if we need to go to this land bank, they'd be basically double-stacked, so if you have a unit that requires two parking spaces, it would be designed to handle that?
Correct, and as Jeff had alluded to, it would be deeded or leased to specific units, so those two spaces would go to one unit. You wouldn't have two owners with two back-to-back spaces, not unlike a single-family house with a car parked in front of a garage.
Exactly. Yep. Okay. Fabulous. I think that's a great solution for it. Can you speak to the elevation of the, so I'm always worried about global warming and this river having flood issues. So, we have an elevation of ninety-two-point-seven-five for the basement level, ground level, garden level, whatever you call it. How does that weigh in with the floodplain and the river flood stage?
Sure. Again, I'll have Brian answer that question, because he's looked at it more in depth.
No problem.
So we've done quite a bit of due diligence with respect to the floodplain. I mean, obviously, we're bounded by water. It's an island, so we really need to understand from two points of view what exactly is going on with the floodplain. So, from a Wetlands Protection Act, from a conservation standpoint, floodplain is a resource area that if we were to alter it, if we were to fill it, we would have to provide compensatory storage. So from a point of development, we need to know where the floodplain elevation, where that line actually lies, and it's demarcated on the plan with a solid line that has triangles in it, and there's one that's kind of on the northern or the rear of the building itself. So what we've done is we've really restricted development to not encroach into the floodplain. We're not proposing to fill floodplain whatsoever. Essentially, if you look at the island, it's a man-made island. It's surrounded by granite retaining walls. The retaining walls, the intent of them were to be above the floodplain elevation. That's really not the case, but there is a bit of a slope kind of above those retaining walls heading into the site on city property, and we're just simply not grading. The second aspect of that is understanding with respect to habitable space within the building and the elevation that it's at coinciding with that floodplain elevation. So as you indicated, the basement elevation ninety-two and change, and the floodplain is actually ninety-five and change, ninety-six and change, where it hits the building. What's going to happen on the basement floor is that Phil is actually going to be brought into the basement, and that floor elevation's going to be brought up above the floodplain. Right now, the basement from floor to ceiling is fourteen, fourteen-and-a-half feet tall, so by raising that slab elevation about five feet and incrementally stepping it throughout the building, we're actually creating habitable space that's above the floodplain. Now, that's important from an insurance perspective, but it's also important from an occupancy standpoint. Jeff and Heritage have had a number of conversations with the building department about obstacles and how to make sure that the building will actually be able to get an occupancy permit, and the solution is actually to make sure that habitable space is above that floodplain. So we've done all of our surveying, all of our due diligence, defining exactly what these elevations are, and then we've designed accordingly.
Okay, so that means that the ground floor documented here as ninety-two-point-seven-five is actually going to be ninety-five-point-seven-five or something.
Correct. I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but essentially, we're going to be bringing up that basement floor to be above the floodplain elevation that's exterior to the building.
So the elevations that we have in front of us show windows in that level that go almost down to the floor level.
Actually, those windows are about five feet above the floor elevation, so the windows are going to be maintained as is, which is, yeah, which Jeff can speak to with respect to the historic tax credits.
So, this presented a major challenge to us when we found that the floodplain was in the ground level, and our understanding per the building code is that we cannot develop any units if there are occupiable spaces that are in the floodplain. So in order to save the whole building, we need to get that ground level up and above the floodplain. So, the solution has been, as Brian mentioned, to bring in Phil, to raise the floors that it's above the floodplain. As you point out, the granite sills on those windows are actually slightly below the elevation that will be the finished grade of the basement or the ground floor. And so what we've proposed to do, and what we've gotten a sign-off on from the historic tax consultant that we're working with, who reports to the Department of the Interior and the National Parks and the National Park Service, is to actually shorten the windows on the ground level. They're quite tall windows, and so we're just removing sort of two or three rows of panes. We'll still have operable windows. There will still be a plethora of natural light in those units, but it will allow us to build on that ground level that was otherwise uninhabitable.
And the grade around the building seems to be around 100, 101, so we're still going down maybe five feet or so to the lower level, but the windows are going to be...
Yeah. I can, actually, Chris, if you would go to the representation that has the four renderings on it, please. So as I mentioned, there are a number of unique challenges that we faced with the sort of landscaping and engineering here. And what you can see on the bottom right, I apologize that it's small from this distance, but the sort of walkway to the main entrance is actually elevated compared to the ground level of the building, and is elevated relative to the elevation of the rear of the building. And so what we're proposing to do is keep that elevation as it is, which is, I believe, is around 100 feet in elevation. We'll have a sort of sloped embankment with some landscaping that you can sort of visually see here. And so the elevation does drop just in front of the building. It's actually about 10 feet wide. There's an existing easement that we have to respect, so we have to leave that 10 feet free and clear, so to speak. So those residents will not be below the outside grade. They will have a window view to the exterior.
I don't mean to get into the weeds here too far, but I just want to understand the rest of the site. So you abut another site?
Sure. Chris, if you would go back to the highlighted parcels, one of the first slides.
I was specifically talking about the one to the west, I guess, or southwest?
To the south. Okay. Yep.
South. Sure.
So the parcel on your renderings in here, to the far right, is the one you're speaking of? Is that correct?
Correct. Yep.
Yeah. So that parcel is currently in tax title. The city has not taken it yet, but they've indicated to us that at some point it is their intent to do so. Historically, that was actually another mill that adjoined this mill building that was burned down both in the '60s and then again in the '70s. You can see it probably better on your representations, but on the northeast corner of that parcel, as it abuts the southern end of our parcel, there's actually a significant increase in elevation. We believe that to be a pile of rubble from when the building was burned down. You can sort of see the bricks and the steel I-beams protruding from that area. As I may or may not have mentioned before, the majority of that parcel, with the exception of that pile, is in the floodplain. So even if it were sort of available to us, it, again, presents a significant challenge. And so that is unoccupied. As I mentioned, we have to leave easements that are in existence because we can't wipe them without the consent of the current owner, who we cannot contact. So, in its current state is where we understand it will remain.
Okay, so there's no plan to develop that at some point?
That's correct. Not only do we not have control, but we've not been given indication that we would at any point commit to control of it.
Okay. There was a meeting with the planning board where we had eight conditions, and if the rest of the board sees that agreeable, I'd like to accept those as our conditions as well, which seem to be pretty comprehensive with the comments for the city. So I thought they pretty much matched what the comments were, so I don't know if the rest of the board has seen those, but, again, I'm thrilled that this is finally coming in front of us, so...
Thank you. We're thrilled to bring it before you today.
Great project.
Thank you.
Great project. Thank you. Oh, one last one.
Sure.
I just want to mention the window line that you have in this mill is phenomenal, and the fact that you have smaller units, they still have like larger windows than most units, just because they are, it's a narrow mill.
Sure.
Especially when you get up... The roof line, are you doing anything with the roofs?
So the roof is currently, I couldn't say the depth, maybe two or three feet, and it's parapet, so we will have HVAC equipment on the roof, but because of the parapet, which surrounds the entire building, you won't see any of it. On the backside, there is a one-story addition that we are incorporating into our design. It has a brick facade currently. Personally, I would have loved to put roof decks on it. That idea got shot down by the Historic Commission because of the view from across the river. So that will just remain roofed in this sort of existing configuration.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very, very well put together presentation. Very, very impressed by what you guys have done here, especially you got a lot of challenges, especially with the Concord Greenway thing, and it's outstanding what you're trying to do to try to work with the city to keep that rolling, because it does pose a hardship to you to lose some of those spaces. So, a couple of questions I did have though, too. Out of the six units that you're, for the usable, I mean, for the floor area per dwelling unit, those six units, which ones are dedicated, like which ones are the 600, how many 600s and how many are the 475s?
Sure. Give me one second. So, Chris, if you would go to one of the, any of the architectural layouts that just show a typical floor. So as I mentioned, the units, the 11-stack, those are the ones near that northwest stair corner.
Yeah.
Each of those, let me just confirm, yeah, each of those is 600 square feet, so that's four of them. And then additionally, on the fourth floor, which floor do you have there? I think that's the fourth floor. Or third floor?
Yeah.
Yeah. So on this floor, there are two sort of in what the architects refer to as the knuckle of the building. So the one, Chris, if you would point to the 475-square-foot studio, is this one, and then the other one is 655 square feet.
Okay. Okay, so you have 1,675, 4,600, I thought you said 1,460, you said 475?
655, 475, and then four at 600 square feet.
Okay, so there's only one unit of 475?
Correct.
Okay. That's kind of might make a concern. That's a very small, a very, very small unit, and that appears as, there's nowhere else you can kind of add on to another?
No. Again, because the building, if the building laid out in a block, it would be a little bit more feasible, but the way that this building kind of zigs and zags, it makes it unfeasible to make that unit any larger. And in our experience, we do have a number of studios that we currently rent out in Lowell, and the biggest difference is how that unit is laid out. I can understand that 475 square feet does sound small, and as somebody who lives in a studio, it doesn't faze me, but if I was coming from a three-family, a three-bedroom house, I would certainly raise my eyebrows at it. But we feel that this design, coupled with the layout, really makes that a very habitable space and a desirable space.
No, I agree. Thank you, Ben. Thank you for clarifying that, too.
No problem.
But again, it's a great project. One thing I was concerned about was the land banking of the parking with the stacking.
Sure.
I would really like to, if you guys are, like, make it a condition, that if you do use that, those have to be dedicated to one unit, one particular unit for each of those spaces.
Absolutely.
Because I don't want to get into situations where we have residents that are fighting over, you know, because it's going to be stacked parking, and you just want to make sure everybody's...
Yeah. As I mentioned, we look at this as, you know, what headache are we going to face if we don't do this correctly, and so that would absolutely be how that was handled. Those units would be assigned, whether or not the other parking spaces in the lot were or not. Those would be assigned to a unit with a known two-car occupancy.
Okay. But, yeah, other than that, that's, I mean, again, it's, looks, great job, and again, I wish you the very best of luck on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my colleagues. Great presentation, very detailed, very thorough explanation of the project. Overall, I think this is going to be a good project for that, for the neighborhood, for that building, a good repurpose of it. But as my colleagues has mentioned, I am also concerned or nervous about parking. So, for me, when I was listening to your presentation, again, very detailed, very good presentation, in total, you have 160 units. What was required by zoning is 212 spots, and you're suggesting 159 spots.
If I may make a correction, it's 71 units. We would be required to have 142 spaces. We're providing 106 with the current plan. The additional 16 land-banked would get us to 122 were those built out.
Okay, so how much, how many more spots do you need to get into zoning?
So if, so, two things. My understanding is that the planning and development, planning department does not recognize the land-banked, so we'll assume that 106 is our accepted number. If that were the case, we would require an additional 36 spaces to meet the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Overall, like I said, I think this is a good project, a good reuse of the building. Like I said, my concerns are the relief of, you know, 35 spots. You know, I think, you know, I understand it's because of the Concord River Greenway, which is, I think, a great project, too, and people are excited about that. I think, I think for me personally, and through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Burns, Mr. Burns, so they're here for four specific variances, right? So I think the other three, for me, you meet, and for section 8.1.3.2, the parking requirements, to me, I think you don't meet the burden, and I wouldn't be able to vote in favor of that particular variant. But overall, I think this is a great use of this building, and you're preserving the history of this building and repurposing it. I think it's a good project, so wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. One thing, if I may, if it would put you at ease at all, I certainly understand your concern. I do have with me the numbers from our existing apartments that we own and manage, and the number of parking spaces of each property, as well as the number of bedrooms and dwelling units. And that data shows, although it's not produced by a third party or a parking engineer, it does show that the numbers that I've cited tonight are within reason and not superfluous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like I said, I think it's, you know, you're asking for relief for a certain number of spots, and I think you think it's fair, and then, you know, it could be fair, but I think, in my opinion, the relief is too, too much. But like I said, overall, I think it's a good project, and, you know, I support it overall.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Philip?
Good evening. I have just two questions for you.
Sure.
I don't see, do you intend to use a dumpster here?
We do. Chris, if you could go to the colored rendering of the finished site. Again, I think the visual will be helpful. I think the visual will be helpful. Oh, no, not that one. Sorry, the one that's on the Okay, so Chris, if you would just point to where the trash and recycling will be. We will have a pad here that will have both a single-stream recycling as well as trash. That was one of the conditions of the, I believe, of our approvals from the planning board. So we intend to have two eight-yard dumpsters on-site. The anticipated frequency is somewhere between two to three times a week, I believe, for the trash, and once or twice a week for the recycling. But as some of the other applicants tonight have indicated, it's a fairly easy thing to go and increase the pickup frequency, should we see an overflow or mismanagement of the trash.
Okay. Yeah, that's one of my concerns. And then the other one is actually... You know, that area actually is like a winding area. Then my concern is the emerging and margin traffic when the apartment is done. Do you have any provisions for that?
From what we've seen, just sort of in terms of being on-site, and we have been on-site quite heavily, we don't anticipate that the anticipated load of parking here will cause problems on the street. The bridge is rather recessed, and so we don't anticipate that we'll sort of have pileups there. The existing, I don't know if the existing condo owners are still here, but there are a number of condos on either side that seem to have no issue with parking in traffic circulation.
I know. I know about that. So what about the little crossover bridge? Are you going to reinforce that, or are you just going to leave it like that?
You mean the existing bridge from Lawrence Street to...
Yeah.
Yeah, so the history of that bridge is kind of interesting. There was an existing narrower bridge, and the portion of that that remains is now sort of fenced off. You can't access that. That bridge was redone in around 2000 to have some environmental remediation, because the trucks that needed to come over to do the remediation couldn't come over the existing bridge. So the existing bridge, as it stands, I believe you received a letter from an engineer stating that it has been designed to bear highway standard loads. Our intent is to provide a pedestrian access on that old bridge, so to speak, that would be separate from the vehicle access. We have started to engage with engineers regarding that design, and of course, it would meet all ADA compliance and so on and so forth.
Just, probably, you said, right now, the building is unutilized, something like that? That's what you said, right?
It's underutilized, I believe, is what I said, yes.
Under. Okay, because I think they have like a gym there right now?
They do. So as recently as three months ago, there was a training facility in there. There's like a strength and performance area. There's also a boxing gym in there, Ramalos, and then there's a sort of like an office and warehouse storage space. But that only, those spaces are only on portions of the first and second floor, so the sort of basement and the top floor are completely vacant currently, so...
I hope, you know, you try to uplift it. It's a nice project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Just one, I have one question about snow removal.
Sure.
Are we doing snow removal in-house? Do you have snow storage?
Sure.
And do you have any plans on...
Management plan, so to speak.
Just picking and getting it out of there.
Sure.
Fall into 2015 again.
Yes. It's a fair question. Again, I apologize. It's light. The snow areas here are highlighted in blue, and I believe you received a revision that shows the snow storage, so Chris can sort of point. So, we intend to snow store there, there, and then, yeah, sort of along the sides of the property. One of the city's concerns early on, especially from the fire department, was will snow storage and in our sort of fire turnaround, and they were very concerned about that. And we explained to them that, as I mentioned, we own and manage over 500 apartments here. We understand the importance of snow management, and what we intend to do, excuse me, is have this be policed by a towing company that we will contract with to come through. If the resident's bases are not assigned, they'll have parking stickers. If they are assigned, they'll also have parking stickers, so that we'll know who's a resident and who's not. And those companies come, and they tow at the vehicle owner's expense. And so, rather quickly, our residents and any guests learn that parking, either in areas that are not designated for parking, or, you know, parking without a guest permit is rather burdensome for them. And so in our experience, that solves that problem, and we also understand the severe importance of keeping the snow out of the fire area turnaround. As I indicated earlier tonight, we will have a management team on-site most days of the week, and certainly during snow events, because that is a, it is a management-intensive activity for us, and we've got that one down, I think, pretty well. So that's how we intend to address that.
Thank you very much. So as you can see, the comments of the board, I mean, I agree with my colleagues very well, presented, detailed, the amount of information we received tonight. In retrospect, from the amount of plans and things that I know I went over, as well as the board members went over. It's always nice when we have a presenter who has colleagues and people that can give us what we need to understand in bits and pieces, and I appreciate that. I also want to thank the members of the condo association and other members of the public that came in tonight and spoke on behalf of the petition. We do have some conditions from a couple of the members. Mr. McCarthy wants to adapt, adopt the eight conditions of the planning board. We have another condition. Was there another?
Yeah, that any, in spaces that are designated as land-banked right now, if they do become utilized, and stacked parking?
Sure.
That each of those would be dedicated to one unit.
One unit. Absolutely.
So those are essentially two conditions?
Sure.
You will...
We're agreeable with that, yes.
Okay. That being said, Patrick, will it be individual votes on each variance?
Yes, you can vote on each variance, sure.
So we do have four separate variances. We will vote on them individually. A clerk will read into the record that the conditions will be set forth in each variance as a whole to the entire petition.
Sure.
You okay with that?
That is acceptable, also.
Okay. Any other questions or comments of members of the board?
Uh...
Yes, we'll take, four separate votes on each variance. Dennis?
I just had one comment. I noticed on the plan that we have approximately 22 parking spaces... I noticed on the plan that we have approximately 22 parking spaces potentially available that are given to the fire truck turning radius, or turnaround area.
I believe there are four or maybe five. If you'd like to, if you could point to where exactly you're talking about, I could address that.
It's on the north side of the parking, the very north edge.
On the north edge.
It's all striped, as though it's available for the fire truck turnaround area.
Will you speak to that, Brian?
So the area that's striped out right now is not proposed for parking whatsoever. It's actually parking restricted, and that was in discussion with the Lowell Fire Department. Essentially, that entire area needs to be available for the tower apparatus, and that's the largest fire apparatus that the Lowell Fire Department has, to be able to make a turnaround, essentially. So just consider kind of a fancy three-point turn at the end of the dead-end aisle. That's how a fire truck can get down to the end parking space and then be able to turn around and get back out. So there is no parking that's proposed there, and that is in perpetuity.
Right. And if you look at the size of that area, though, it could possibly hold as many as 22 parking spaces.
Yeah, I don't know the exact count, if it is a large swath of pavement.
Just one of those things. There's no other way for the fire truck to exit.
So what we've done is actually Heritage and myself have been going through back and forth negotiations and conversations since September, October, and this is the final iteration. We've actually went through a couple of different ones where we proposed, say, mid-aisle turnarounds, where basically there was a T-style halfway through the parking area. And essentially, the fire department felt that this, that's before the board, the plan that's before the board, is the most, the most efficient, the best way that they can get in and out of the site.
Got it. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other board members have any additional comments or concerns? That being said, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2018-6, property located at 850 and 852.5 Lawrence Street. The applicant is doing NE Heritage Properties for variance, which will be read in four separate votes with the following conditions on each variance. Number one is the conditions of the planning board are adopted, and number two, any land banked parking sites utilized into stacked parking must be dedicated to one unit each. That being acceptable, first vote would be on, under section 8.1, 8.1.3.1 for lot area per dwelling use.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second motion.
Roll call.
Chairman Perin.
Approve with conditions.
Member Pack.
Approve with conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Jamina.
Approve with conditions.
So you've been approved.
Next, next vote, Mr. Chairman, on variance under section 8.1.3.2 for parking per dwelling unit with the previously named conditions.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Perin.
Approve with conditions.
Member Pack.
Deny.
Member Callahan.
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Jamina.
Approve with conditions.
So you've been approved.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion for variance under section 8.1.3.4 for, that's, which one is that? A minimum floor area per dwelling unit with the previously mentioned conditions.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Roll call.
Chairman Perin.
Approve with condition.
Member Pack.
Approve with conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Jamina.
Approve with conditions.
So you've been approved.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, make a motion for variance under section 8.1.3.6 for usable open space with the previously mentioned conditions.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Perin.
Approve with conditions.
Member Pack.
Approve with conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Jamina.
Approve with conditions.
So your variance has been approved. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and the board, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your presentation.
We'll clean up that mess over there now.
Moving forward, returning back to continued business, ZB 2017-49 for a variance for Stephen McLean at 34 Fisher Street. It's the applicant present. Let the record show, the applicant is not present, and we have no communication to DPD for correspondence and continuance, withdrawal, or anything.
No, I have not heard from the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, I know we did, we did get an email from Christine about my inquiry with the law department. I didn't see that the petitioner was included in that email, and I don't know, maybe she was mistaken at the last hearing. Figuring she didn't have to show up, so I'll leave it at the board's discretion, but my suggestion, maybe if we can put this on for the next meeting, and if we can reach out to the applicant one more time and tell her she has to come. Under the circumstances, I think that would be appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Callahan. Also, that, at the meeting, and we, you know, in the interest of the legalities of whether she could be the official applicant on the paperwork, we asked her to continue it so we can get a recognition from the law department, and they said we can vote on it. Maybe she was confused with the date or whatever. So I would agree, if my colleagues agree with it, we can continue to the next meeting as well.
Certainly. And the other comments, remember, there's a board.
Mr. Chairman, I think that in light of the fact of her boyfriend dying quickly, and I think there's some confusion there, I'd like to see it continued as well.
The wish of the board is to continue the matter. We will continue the matter of ZB 2017-49 to our next meeting, which is?
February 26th.
February 26th.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue ZB 2017-49 to February 26th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Perin.
Approve the continuance.
Member Pack.
Continue.
Member Callahan.
Approve the continuance.
Member McCarthy.
Continue.
Member Jamina.
Continues.
That being said, most of that petition has been continued. Moving forward with other business, we have minutes for approval. We have minutes from November 13, 2017, September 11, 2017, and January 22, 2018. May I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of January 22, 2018, September 11, 2017, and November 13, 2017.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Roll call.
Chairman Perin.
Accept the meetings.
Member Pack.
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan.
Approve the minutes.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the minutes.
Member Jamina.
Approve the minutes.
The minutes are approved for those three meetings, minutes. Any other comments or concerns of members of the board? Do we have anything pending? Any handouts?
Yes, I do have handouts for next week's meeting. There's a sign for 15 Wood Street, and then also for 230, 234 Appleton Street.
Great, thank you. At this point, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.